Hello, I'm Jay Jermaine Bay, Volodya Moore's predium, Antay Kalorata. The acronym is AMPAC and the chief judge of counsel court. Today is class 89, class 89. What did we learn in class 88? Well, we're still going over the Charter of the United Nations of 1945, chapter 6, right? So, chapter 6 about the Pacific settlement of disputes, which is one of the most important chapters of the Charter, right? Because it's about how do you settle disputes in a peaceful way? That way you don't disrupt the ordinary methods of international law, right? So, the ordinary method of international law is what? Peace and security. If you do anything to infringe upon that, now you're acting like an outlaw. So, international law is about being inside of the law, respecting the law. But always remember, Moors, that international law is Moroccan law, because all of their resolutions, all of their conventions, all their declarations came from the pen of the Sultan. France was acting on behalf of the Sultan, and the Sultan was acting as a trustee on behalf of the Moors. You must always remember that. So, if we continuously talk about the Charter, never look at the Charter as if it's just some third-party document. In reality, it is part and parcel to you, right? So, in class 88, we really started to get into how is it that Moors can come together, right? How can we become one state? Even though at this time, all the Moors have their own autonomous independent state, right? All the more states right now who ratified, deposited, promulgated a constitution, right now, they have international borders. So, all the more states right now are all separate states. We are all technically foreign states to each other. Technically, because we have international borders, right? Now, even though we share the same nationality, we're claiming to live in different households. If you can understand what I'm saying, right? So, now that we have to figure out how to come together as a family, right? So, we gotta come back under one roof, and how do we do that? We do that through what's called erga honest parties, right? So, under erga honest parties, all of our individual states can come together and act as one state, okay? As partners, almost like a class action lawsuit, right? Generic way of saying erga honest parties on an international level, right? So, what Moors have to understand is this. At this stage of the game, right now, we have Moors who are part of the old paradigm. We have Moors as part of the new paradigm. But the reality is, we all have to come together. We gotta work together, right? We have to figure out how to put purpose and priority over posturing, right? We gotta figure out a way to put purpose and priority over paralysis. We have to find a way to put purpose and priority over all the personal vendettas. We got too much work to do, right? So, we have to all come together. We have to come up with a strategy, and how do we proceed with that strategy from a tactical perspective in order to institute our Moroccan reforms in order to get liberation from our occupation, right? So, that's what we're learning right now at this time. Like I said, all the Moors right now, we're in a huddle, right? So, we're all gonna huddle up. We're gonna talk about the play. We got the clipboard out. Here's the Xs and Os. And what, at the end of the day, what are we trying to achieve? We're trying to achieve unity as Moors, right? So, we have to be as one people, one voice, one beat of the drum, right? We have to come together, and we shall overcome. And that's the truth, alright? So, let's take a look at the board. On the board, we got the Charter of the United Nations, chapter 6. It's about the Pacific settlement of disputes, right? So, the Pacific settlement dispute, I have a question about that, right? How can Moors settle disputes with any foreign state or any foreign international organization in Morocco, right? The answer is unity, right? But how is it that we unite? Well, the first step, we need what? We needed constitutions. That was the first step. The constitution is paramount. Without the constitution, there is no Udi Pausidides juris, right? Without the constitution, there is no erga honest parties. So, we had to put things in proper sequential order. This is why we gotta get away from the old paradigm and start understanding the new paradigm is nothing but a repeat of something that's been done on planet Earth for decades. But unfortunately, Moors forgot about our own constitutional principles. We continue to say to the, about the colonists, that the colonists drafted or adopted their constitution for Moors. Okay, then if they adopted their constitution from us, that mean we talking about constitutions, then where's our constitution? We cannot continue to point fingers at the colonists, blaming them for everything and saying we taught them everything, and then we turn around and don't even have our own act together. So, if they learned everything from us, then guess what? Prove it. Where's your constitution? So, as you know, AMPAC opens up the constitution all the time. Without it, we cannot even take the first step towards getting our liberation from our occupation. But once we take that first step, and once we ratified, deposited, promulgated our constitution, now we can start to come together and unite as states. What type of states? United States of Morocco, right? So, here's what we're trying to achieve. We're still talking about the clipboard, right? We're looking at, not the clipboard, but we're looking at the playbook, right? We're in a huddle, right? So, we're in a huddle, we're looking at the board now, right? So, what is that we're trying to achieve? We're trying to achieve unity, that's first. Without that, there's nothing, there's no team, right? So, in order to achieve this, in order for us to be victorious and come together as Moors, as Moroccans, confident Moroccans, our states, we have to start understanding what is erga honest parties. That's us all come together, right? As parties. We have to put together a wazir regional council. That's what's called a regional agency. That's discussed in the Charter. Article 33 talks about how do you solve problems. Well, you may need a regional agency to deal with regional or universal type of problems or disputes you have, right? Also, we're going to have to establish the United States of Morocco treaty. The Moors must sign treaties between our states, because the treaties act like a contract. We will sign a contract amongst each other. That way, we can maintain accountability while, throughout the fact that we have unity. We have to create standards to understand what are standard operating procedures on what we're doing right now, SOPs, right? So, the treaty will help us understand how to treat each other and what the objective is, and how do we get on the same page, right? So, between the wazir regional council that we're working on at this time and the United States of Morocco treaty, we will come together and unite to have the same understanding as one people, one voice, one beat of the drum, right? And through all that, we'll write declarations of intervention anytime we have a dispute with any other foreign state, alright? But at the end of the day, what should Moors try to strive more so than anything else? We must be peace-loving states. Why do I say that? Why do we have to be peace-loving states? Moors, do y'all honestly think we're gonna be at peace if the Americans are still restless in Morocco? You see, our happiness is only going to come when we make sure that we've at least satisfied the needs of the Americans. The Americans need jobs. So, guess who can bring jobs back? We can. We can establish industry again, manufacturing. We can bring all that back to Morocco, because we'll have the infrastructure to do it. There's 330 million people in this jurisdiction. 330 million. Brilliant people. But unfortunately, the bankers and shareholders have outsourced all the jobs out of our continent. But the Moors can bring them back, because we'll have the type of monies that's coming in through taxation, appropriations, to start to bring back the jobs, because the average American and the average Moroccan is nothing but a C-plus student. People want industrial jobs. They want manufacturing jobs. They want labor-type jobs, because most people are good with their hands. But most people don't technically want a technical job. That requires a higher aptitude. So, therefore, they've outsourced all the C-plus student jobs overseas. And this continent is full of C-plus students that can't find a job. Even though there's jobs available, they can't apply for those jobs. Why? Because they don't have the technical aptitude for those type of jobs. So, we have to bring back manufacturing, industrial revolution. We can do it. That's how we maintain peace with them. What do Americans want? Lower taxes, better wages, health insurance. They want their dignity. Three bedrooms, two and a half bath. And as we'll learn today, as the good brother Martin Luther King, he continued to express to the world. The United States had plenty of money to take care of their old citizens, but they were only interested in their military-industrial complex. Perpetual wars, that was it. Old men getting paid that were shareholders, and young men dying. That's all war is. Somebody getting rich and somebody being laid to rest. That's gotta come to an end. We must be peace-loving states. And the Moors can help with that from the inside out. It can be a ripple effect. But it starts here. We have to heal our own house. We gotta heal our own people as Moors. Then we have to help the Americans to settle down so they can now have prosperity amongst themselves. And that will start to ripple effect around planet Earth. That's the purpose of Moors wearing fezzes. It's supposed to represent liberators, alright? Okay, so as Moors already know, we're in the Charter of 1945. We're in chapter 6. Chapter 6 is about the Pacific settlement disputes. Article 33, right now, we're learning about erga honest parties, right? And then eventually, we're gonna get into what's called a declaration of intervention. Those two things go hand in hand, right? But this is all about coming together to unite based upon following a set of instructions on how you settle disputes. Well, who do we have the first dispute with? It's with ourselves. That's what we have to start. We have to unite. We gotta be on the same team, right? We gotta know how to effectively communicate with each other through due process, right? Standards, standard operating procedures. So, in chapter 6, the Pacific settlement disputes, article 33, is about the parties to any dispute. Show, first of all, seek a solution. And that solution is by what? Mediation, arbitration, or finally judicial settlement. But also, in order to seek a settlement of dispute, states can come together and establish what's called a regional agency. So, states can resort to regional agencies or arrangements or other peaceful means of their own choice, right? So, what does this mean right here? The state-on-state dispute, you're supposed to try to work out your own dispute amongst yourselves. The Moors right now, because of our treaties, it gives us the right to exercise judicial authority through our counsel courts. But before we even get to that status, first, we must seek mediation, then arbitration, then judicial settlement from a regional perspective, right? From a national perspective, what does national mean? Just the continent itself, not the world. How can we settle dispute with the United States of America? That's the first question. But we first have to settle dispute with ourselves to work together, alright? So, but last but not least, if counsel court does not prevail, then we got every right to petition the International Court of Justice, which is article 36, right? And because of that, now we have to learn, if in fact, we petition the International Court of Justice, what is it that they more or less expect to see from the Moors? They'd wanna see if the Moors are at varying stages of advancement. They wanna see if the Moors actually have studied the handbook on how to be a state. Are we self-governing or not? It's easy to draft a constitution. As Moors are learning, that first box is relatively simple. The second box of the triple principle is where you have to now utilize experience, skillset, intelligence. Learn how to work together at a round table. That's the hard part. How do we come together as a team? So, the International Court of Justice will be looking for these things. They're gonna look at all evidence that we present to them. All of our exhibits, they're gonna want. But they will want to see everything we've done at varying stages of advancement, how we followed the instructions, or how we've been obstructionist. Well, if you're at the ICJ, somebody either followed instruction or someone's an obstructionist. Which one are we going to be? And that's why we have to come together and unite, put together standards and accountability. Become one people, one voice, one state, alright? So, with the Charter, what we learned in class 88, we started learning about Ukraine and Russia. Why are we studying Ukraine and Russia? Because we can utilize it as case law. What steps did they take? What do the European states do to support one of their allies, right? Even though Ukraine is not a party to NATO, and Ukraine is not a party to the European Union, they still see Ukraine as part of the European states. So, they're part of the party whether they're a member or not a member. They still looking out for Ukraine. Well, we can study how the United States of America was looking out for Ukraine and all the other European states were looking out for Ukraine. We can study this to figure out how do Moors look out for each other. Follow the instructions. Follow the case law. Study the repertoire. And we can know how to utilize these processes, these standard operating procedures, right? That's why we're going through it, okay? So, in this case, Moors can go look it up. We talked about this in class 88. Alright, so this is a quick snapshot. Moors can go over to the right. Once you go to the case, you can open up this box, and you can click on any one of these fields, right? You go over overview of the case, institutional proceedings, provisional measures, questions of jurisdiction and/or admissibility, intervention, written proceedings, oral proceedings, other documents, the orders from the court, summaries of judgments and orders, and press releases. Oh, the press. The power of the press. You see, when the Moors go to the ICJ, that will make headlines, because the press is always at the United Nations headquarters, and they're always at the ICJ in the Netherlands. The power of the press will put more emphasis on the fact that the Moors are trying to enforce their human rights, the periphery norms of justice coaches. The power of the press will put a lot of pressure on the United States international organization to abide by the treaties of Moors. So, this right here, when you click on this, Moors, you'll see a lot about what the press had to say about the case of Ukraine versus Russia. But the perspective I need you to take is understand that, even though they say the revolution won't be televised, the reality is, it will be televised, right? Because of the press, that's the most powerful tool to use. We won't have to hire the press. The press will be there automatically, right? This box right here is very important. That's the one box that the United States of America and the United States fears the most. If you go watch Fox News or CNN, they don't talk about the International Court of Justice. Let's see, if the world picks up that case of Moroccan states versus United States of America, the world's gonna pick that up in their media, and the whole world's going to be talking about it. And this is what the United States of America and the United States doesn't want to happen. Every time they go to the ICJ and they lose, they don't come back and tell the citizens of the United States that they lost at the ICJ again. But this time, they're gonna have to tell the citizens what happened at the ICJ, because it directly will affect the citizens of the United States. This is what Philip Hoffman was saying in 1906, the expatriation, protection abroad, citizenship abroad, 1906 document, right? And Philip Hoffman was talking to the Secretary of War, Mr. Root. And he said, "If these Moors come back and check these boxes, then the United States of America's gonna have to contemplate seriously on how they're gonna have to deal with this. What is it they have to deal with? What is it the United States gotta deal with? Telling their own people the truth." That's what they gotta deal with. In addition to coming under Moroccan law, the United States is not worried about Moroccan law? You know why? Because they know that Moors can't violate their human rights. We can't become belligerent, because we'll lose in the ICJ. We'll lose at counsel court. So, they already know we can't violate their human rights. They're not worried about Moroccan law. They're worried about how their citizens are gonna treat them for deceiving them. As to what took place on January 21st of 2021, well, it's January 6th, I mean, January 6th of 2021, where the citizens of the United States stormed their capital out of just simple frustration. Imagine what's gonna happen when they find out that these people, they've been calling Negro, blacks, and coloreds, are actually Moroccans, that they did not get them from Africa, and that all these properties belong to the Moors. This is why Moors have to come into this as peace-loving states, because the average citizen is gonna be frustrated and confused. The last thing they need is for Moors to be belligerent towards them, because the citizens of the United States are going to be looking for a target to take their frustration out of. And it better not be Moors. I tell you that right now. Get out the way, Moors. So, while they're storming the Capitol, the Moors need to be at home watching it on TV. The Americans need to know that the Moors come in peace. The Americans need to know that the Moors are gonna chop these taxes down. The Americans need to know that these gas prices will come down. Did you know that the United States produces more oil than anybody else on planet Earth? They export it. They got all kind of oil reserves here in Morocco. When I say they, they have, meaning they've been the trustees over oil reserves that come out of Morocco. There's no reason why these gas prices should be this high. They're high because the shareholders wanna make profits. They don't even care about their own American citizens. So, who should care? Moors. That's who should care, because we gotta be peace-loving states. Because how we treat the Americans is how the rest of the world thinks we're gonna treat them. Think about it. So, we have to come into this with love instead of hate. We gotta unite and take our place among the affairs of other states. Because when the press come in and that microphone's in your face, you know what they're gonna be listening for? Are you going to be a tyrant? Or are you gonna come into this with fairness? Which kind of war are you going to be? And if they even sense that you're gonna be a tyrant, if they sense you're gonna be a communist, it will not work. You know how I know? It didn't work with us, did it? They tried to be a tyrant against us. They tried to be communist against us. It never worked. We didn't went from being slaves to get no money to now we're multimillionaires with jets. We bounced back. We fought back. And Americans gonna do the same if we try to be belligerent towards them. They won't tolerate it, and nor should they. They deserve their human rights as well. So, let's get on the same team, right? Moroccans and Americans is what Sidi Mohamed set up in the first place. That was his mission. That was his vision. And we gotta carry it out for the good of the people of Morocco and the Americans. Because guess what? Whether the Moors like to hear this or not, the Americans have grafted themselves in with the Moroccans. We're grafted together. We have become one people. The only difference is, who controls the civil and criminal courts? Who controls the banks? Who controls the finance? Who controls the public services and the public works and the public utilities? That's the real question. Other than that, we all have to learn how to cohabitate. We've been cohabitating. But we have been grafted together. Now, we have to learn how to effectively communicate with each other. Let's get back to the board. Okay, Moors. Alright, so this is a great case of Russia, excuse me, Ukraine versus Russia, alright? Talking about the declaration of intervention. We'll go into that more in the next couple of classes, right? But right now, we've been reading over... Well, let me back up a little bit. We talked about the intervention declarations, right? So, that's a list. I consolidated the list. Okay, so, Moors know about that from class 88, alright? So, there's all the European states that were erga honest parties who wrote a declaration of intervention on behalf of Ukraine, okay? That's what Moors would do consistently, okay? And next, after we get done talking about erga honest parties, we'll get into the introduction to intervention under international law. We'll take a look at another law review about that. That's very important, alright? Okay, so, in class 88, we're reading over this particular document of erga honest parties before the International Court of Justice from standing to judgment on the merits, right? This was another law review by the attorneys. You can learn about the attorneys in class 88, who actually drafted this, okay?
Applicants facing themselves solely on erga honest parties standing will often face particular challenges in securing access to the evidence necessary to build their case, because the alleged violations will not directly affect the applicant or its nationals and are likely to have occurred within the respondent's state's territory. Of course, this difficulty is not necessarily unique to cases involving erga honest parties standing. As Judge Uwada observed in Oil Platforms Islamic Republic versus Iran, Islamic Republic of Iran versus United States of America, Oil Platforms, there is often an inherent asymmetry that comes into the process of discharging the burden of proof. That asymmetry featured in application of the convention on the prevention of punishment of the crime of genocide, Croatia versus Serbia, the Croatian genocide case, where the court ultimately dismissed Croatia's claim that Serbia was best placed to provide explanations of acts which are claimed to have taken place in a territory over which Serbia exercised exclusive control. However, the court may afford an applicant alleging violations of erga honest parties obligations within the executive territorial control of the respondent, a more liberal recourse to inferences of fact and circumstantial evidence as it did in Corfu Channel, United Kingdom of Great Britain, and Northern Ireland versus Albania, Corfu Channel. Attempts by a respondent to destroy evidence or otherwise impede the applicant's access to information can exacerbate and inherit... Indeed, the risk of evidentiary obstructions may be higher in cases alleging breaches of erga honest parties obligations due to the seriousness of such allegations and the intense international scrutiny they will often inspire. For example, the preservation of evidence has been the basis of two provisional measure requests by the Gambia... by the Gambia in Gambia versus Myanmar. Below, we discuss the implications that the asymmetry in access to information likely to...
Alright, just a moment. Just pause right there. So what is this word, asymmetry, right? What is this word, right? What does that mean? Okay, let's look that up real quick. Okay, Sister Noma?
Asymmetry. It's a noun. Lack of equality or equivalence between parts or aspects of something. Lack of symmetry. There was an asymmetry between the right and left ears. The global system is marked by great asymmetry. The most important goods are controlled by groups in a relatively small number of countries. Gravitational asymmetries have pulled the spear out of shape. Similar are lack of symmetry, non-uniformity, unevenness, crookedness, lopsidedness, contortion, deformity, jaggedness, raggedness, cragginess, indention, indentation.
Right, so, okay. So this word right here is somewhat applicable to the Moors. Why do I say that? Because right now, we're, we're, we're a fractionalized society, right? So, right now, all the Moors are doing fifty to one hundred different processes, different from the other Moors. We all think we got the secret sauce. So we're in a fractionalized society. We've been displaced. So right now, there's no equality amongst each other. But once we come back and unite, that unity is gonna help us to get our liberation from our occupation. But we have to unite with the pen in order to put an end to colonialism. And the only way we can do that is we have to come back together at a roundtable of Moors once again. But what's happening right here with these attorneys? They're talking about the fact that at the ICJ, the ICJ recognizes that if another foreign state is doing something to infringe against, against your human rights or your state rights, the belligerent state will try to get rid of evidence. It's very difficult to get evidence, let's say, uh, Canada, right, as an example. If they've done something, well, how do we get evidence from them that they've done something, right? If they're holding on to the evidence that we technically need. So the ICJ recognizes when you're trying to bring a case to the ICJ, sometimes you don't have access to all the evidence that you need, because someone's withholding it. So the ICJ is recognizing this. That it's very difficult to prove your case without all the evidence, without all the exhibits. So as we keep reading, the ICJ is going to let you know they've determined that they gotta get involved and help. For example, they might have to get involved to help the Moors to get all the evidence that we need from the United States International Organization. We'll learn about that. But my point here is asymmetry, as the ICJ is pointing this out, that it's not fair. The game is slightly rigged. So the ICJ is getting involved to become good stewards, to be good, good referees, to call balls and strikes and make sure the game is fair, that it's organized. And that's why organization is so important amongst the Moors. We're talking about organization today. It's very important, Moors, that we get on the same page, play by the same rules, that when, when we win, we, we win by winning with the rules. We win by doing it right the first time and not the second time, okay? Alright, so, Noma, you start with attempts again.
Attempts by a respondent to destroy evidence or otherwise impede the applicant's access to information can exacerbate the inherent asymmetry. Indeed, the risks of evidentiary obstruction may be higher in cases alleging breaches of Uragamas parties obligations due to the seriousness of such allegations and the intense international scrutiny they will often inspire. For example, the preservation of evidence has been the basis of two provisional measure requests by the Gambia in Gambia versus Myanmar. Below, we discuss the implications that the asymmetry in access to information likely to attend cases based on Uragamas parties standing may have for the different types of evidence that typically feature in ICJ proceedings. A, documentary evidence. Documentary evidence has been described as the most common and certainly the most important type of evidence in litigation before the ICJ. Applicants in cases based on Uragamas parties standing will often face challenges in marshalling documentary evidence for the reasons set forth above. As the court has observed in Croatia versus Serbia and Pope Mills on the River Uruguay, Argentina versus Uruguay, while...
Pause. Alright, so what's happening? Pay attention, Moors. These attorneys are giving us the answers to the test. What is it that the ICJ is looking for? They're looking for, first and foremost, documenting evidence. Right? We need evidence in order to prove that there's a contentious dispute. Documentation beats conversation every day of the week, right? So these, these attorneys are recognizing what the ICJ requires in order for you to have a stronger case. But the ICJ also recognizes that the person that's being a belligerent may be hiding certain documents from you. We'll learn about that. So what is the ICJ looking for first? Okay, A, documentary evidence. This is why the Moors don't understand why the United States never responds to Moors. They don't wanna give you the documentation that rejects your so-called improper persona su juris status. What's the main reason why the United States never responds to Moors? You know why? They don't have to recognize you, because you never had a Moors government, a state government, that recognized your name. You claim to be Kendrick Bay. They're like, okay, tell me the name of the state. The more state they claim you as being Kendrick Bay. So assume you sent some, sent them some documents. You know what you sent them? Something that's patently frivolous and arbitrary and capricious, because you, you're claiming to be someone that you're not. The parties must be known. That's the first box in contract law. The parties must be known. They didn't recognize the party name you're using. Then you turn around and call yourself Moors American. There's no such thing as Moors Americans. Moors Americans are misknown. There's no treaty on planet Earth that recognizes Moors Americans. You can't find that name nowhere as a legal personality in a treaty. You can't find a Moors American listed nowhere in a convention. You can't find Moors American as a legal personality in, in any arrangement on an international level. So the word or phrase as a title, Moors American, you know what it really is? Color law. It's colorable. What does colorable mean? Counterfeit. It lacks reality. It's private law, because we, as Moors, came up with the Moors American brand. But it's not recognized nowhere on planet Earth, other than amongst each other. So it's private law. It's not public law. Public law means it has to be in a treaty. Public law means it's mentioned in the Constitution. In the meantime, it's just private law. We have to get away from the old paradigm. We have to unite. We have to put our purpose and priority over our individuality. We have to come together as one people. If the first box of contract law is the parties must be known, then which party name should be on the contract that you're representing it? Are you American? Are you Moroccan? Pick one. Because that's gonna determine whether you're going to unite and be right or you're gonna mess around and get left. And that's the truth. So the ICJ is looking for what? Documentary evidence. What's your first documentary evidence?
Constitution.
Your constitution. And in your constitution, it names the party. The parties is who? Moroccans in Morocco, Moors. You call yourself American, guess what? You just gave them documentary evidence that you can't even make a proper claim. See, the Moors gotta understand, even though we're gonna make a claim against the United States of America, first it starts with us. Do we have our own proper boxes checked? Are we an improp- improper persona su juris? It's either yes or no. Ain't no in-between. Because in a treaty of a treaty, eighteen eighty, Article fifteen, it says, we have to choose the entire, entire submission to the laws of the empire. So this documentation is just as much applicable on us as it is against the United States. The ICJ is going to look at our documentation as well. They're not going to give us a moral victory, and nor can we get a moral victory through our consular courts. The consular court can't call itself American consular court. There's no such thing on planet Earth as an American consular court. Your treaties say it's Moroccan government oversees consular court. So let's read it again. Section A. Well, let me start at the top. Attended, attend, attend cases based on Uragamas parties standing they have for the different types of evidence that typically feature in ICJ proceedings. So these attorneys listed it, right? A, documentary evidence. Documentary evidence has been described as the most common and certainly the most important type of evidence in litigation before the ICJ. This is why the United States doesn't wanna send you any documentation, because they already know that's a losing strategy for them in this political game of chess. But you're supposed to have all your documentation that you submitted. Whether they respond or not, whether they, they show up and make an appearance or not, you gotta keep moving forward with your pen. Applicants in cases based on Uragamas parties standing will often face challenges in marshalling docu- documentary evidence for the reasons set forth above. As the court has observed in Croatia versus Serbia and Pope Mills on the River Uruguay, Argentina versus Uruguay, while... Okay, Sister, Sister Noma?
The burden of proof rests in principle on the parties which alleges a fact that does not relieve the other party of its duty to cooperate in the provision of such evidence as may be in its possession that could assist the court in resolving this dispute submitted to it.
Pause. So look what these attorneys are expressing about what the ICJ is saying. The burden of proof rests in principle on the party who's the, who's the claimant, right? So the Moors are the claimant. The United States of America would be the respondent in this example, okay? There's no plaintiff-defendant in international law. It's claimant versus respondent, okay? Take it from the top. The burden of proof rests in principle on the party which alleges a fact. This does not relieve the other party of its duty to cooperate in the provisions of such evidence as may be in its possession that could assist the court in resolving the dispute submitted to it. This is the attorneys telling the attorneys, you know, the ICJ can summon for us to cough up the evidence. See what's happening? Sister Noma?
The authen- authenticity, provenance, and reliability of documentary evidence will often be a source of contention. The court's general approach is to liberally admit evidence and then address concerns as to the credibility in determining what weight to give that evidence. The use of audiovisual evidence in the Bosnian genocide case illustrates the court's approach. In that case, Bosnia sought to admit a video purporting to show the execution of six Bosnian Muslims. Although the court admitted the video recording, it did not expressly serve as a basis of its conclusions.
Pause. You see what's happening, Moors? It's all about the pen. Yes, Moors gonna have plenty of video. But the court is looking for everything that's in a proper written instrument. That must be understood. This is why documentation coming from our own states is important. Don't worry about whether the United States responds or not. You keep writing. That's what's important.
B, third-party reporting. Beyond their role as custodians of documentary evidence, third parties, including UN bodies and non-governmental organizations, NGOs, will often play a key role in reporting on events relevant to disputes brought on the basis of Uragamas parties standing.
Pause. Okay, so third-party reporting, right? So who can be a third party? Well, it can be the other Moors states. Let's say the Moors states are supporting AMPA in a case, right? The other Moors states are considered third parties because they wasn't directly injured. They're being indirectly injured. So now they come in as third parties to help assist with the case, right? So it says, B, third-party reporting. Beyond their role as custodians of documentary evidence, third parties, including UN bodies and non-governmental organizations, NGOs, will often play a key role in reporting on events relevant to disputes brought the basis of Uragamas parties standing. So what's happening? The UN is gonna come in and do an investigation. And when ICJ looks at that investigation, they consider that circumstantial evidence to, to be very strong evidence. So the ICJ trusts the other organs of the United Nations, such as the Human Rights Committees, et cetera. They'll come in and perform an investigation, right? Okay, so let's take a look at UN fact finding.
One, UN fact finding. The ICJ has relied extensively on reporting from United Nations agencies, including country uh, country missions and reports of special rapporteurs. Commentators have observed that the court has attached considerable probative value to reports compiled and communicated by United Nations agencies in complex, fact-intensive legal controversies. For instance, in Bosnian genocide, the court relied on reports by the UN Secretary General and a commission of experts that the Secretary General had appointed. In assessing the evidentiary rule, the court expressly considered the following factors.
Pause. Okay, so what's happening? This attorney is telling the Moors what you need in order to be victorious at the ICJ. But these attorneys are also exposing to the United States that we, the United States just can't hold on to evidence. You gotta see what's happening here. This is section B. Who can come in and help the Moors? The United Nations and their committees. They can extract documents, circumstantial evidence that ordinarily the Moors won't get access to. The United Nations can come in and get it. They can summon it. They have a search warrant. This is what you gotta understand what's being exposed to you right now. And they're giving case law. Attorneys always give case law. These are, these, these case laws, they talk about, Moors gotta go back and study these things to see how these political chess games were played. How did these other states get access to documentation evidence from, from another belligerent state? Well, they brought in the UN to help them as a third party. Fact-finding party. So the UN is a value add to a peace-loving state.
The source of the item of evidence, for instance, partisan or neutral. Number two, the process by which it has been generated, for instance, an anonymous press report or the product of a careful court or court-like process. And three, the quality or character of the item, such as statements against interests and, and agreed or uncontested facts.
Alright, so the three steps. This is what the ICJ can look at. Continue.
The court reaffirmed these factors in the Croatian genocide case and concluded that a report by a UN special rep- rapporteur appointed by the Commission on Human Rights deserved evidential weight by reason both of the independent status of its author and of the... By reason both of the independent status of its author and of the fact that it was prepared at the request of the organs of the United Nations for purposes of the exercise of their functions. Similarly, in armed activities on the territory of the Congo, Democratic Republic of the Congo versus Uganda, armed activities, the court explained that it would take into consideration evidence contained in certain United Nations documents to the extent that they are of probative value and are corroborated if necessary by other cred- credible sources. The court's willingness to afford evidentiary weight on United Nations reports suggests that applicants in cases based on ergo honest parties standing will find themselves on firm footing when relying on fact-finding that United Nations bodies have conducted.
Pause. See what's happening? So the United Nations almost acting like the FBI, right?
Right.
Federal Bureau of Investigators, right? We must understand as ergo honest parties that we can petition the United Nations to assist us. Only if we're a peace-loving state. Only if we're competent states. Not belligerent states. This is what Moors have to understand. That there's a lot of help out there. But we just didn't know this. Why we didn't know it, I don't know, but we're gonna learn today, right? Because we're going to unite and move the ball forward. Let's continue.
Indeed, in its provisional measures order in the Gambia versus Myanmar, the court relied on the evidence collected to date by the UN Independent International Fact-Finding Mission on Myanmar.
Pause. Indeed, indeed. In its provisional measures order in the Gambia versus Myanmar, the court relied on the evidence collected to date by the UN Independent International Fact-Finding Mission. You see, the Moors are very determined people. But the UN body is also determined. Determined to do what? Get it right the first time. They have to stick to the provisions of their own charter. The obligations are charged to do what? Maintain peace and security. And the only way to, to do that is to create a situation where it's fairness. They will help the Moors if we understand how to petition them in the right manner. Why do I say they help the Moors? Because they're already helping other people on planet Earth. This is case law. Moors aren't special. The reality is, we're just like any other states on planet Earth. We got a right to position, petition to get the same help that other states have already utilized UN processes. Our nationality is no better than anybody else's nationality on planet Earth. The question is, can we learn how to utilize the processes? Then we can be victorious.
Okay, seceding by the UN Independent Investigative Mechanisms for Myanmar, IIMM, the Human Rights Council established IIMM to collect, consolidate, preserve, and analyze evidence of the most serious international crimes and violations of international law committed in Myanmar in order to facilitate future judicial proceedings. In the Netherlands ultimately brings a case against Syria, it was likely similar, similarly benefit from the work of the international impartial and independent mechanisms which like the IIMM operates under a UN mandate to collect, preserve, and analyze evidence.
Pause. If the Netherlands ultimately brings a case against Syria, it will likely similarly benefit from the work of the international impartial and independent mechanisms which like the IIMM operates under a UN mandate to collect, preserve, and analyze evidence. These are subject matter experts that can help the Moors. How long has the U- UN been in existence? Since nineteen forty-five. We're in the year twenty-twenty-three. Why didn't we know this? Better yet, let's get to know this. Let's master it. That's our obligation now. To understand where are the resources that we can utilize to help us to uplift fallen humanity. Let's continue.
If the Netherlands ultimately brings a case against Syria, it will likely similarly benefit from the work of the international impartial and inter- inter- independent mechanisms which like the IIMM operates under a UN mandate to collect, preserve, and analyze evidence. Of course, the court's reliance on UN reporting has its limits. While the IIMM found reasonable grounds to conclude that there is a strong inference of genocidal intent on the part of the state based on hostile policies towards the Rohingya, denial of their citizenship and ethnicity, ident- and ethnic identity hate speech, condoned living conditions and impunity to date. The court will ultimately draw its own legal conclusion of the intent requirement on the merits.
Pause. So this word attempt, that's a very powerful word in international law. When the Moors go back and study the punishment um, for crimes of genocide, right? I think it's all called the punishment and, no, prevention and punishment for the crimes of genocide, right? One of the definitions for genocide says there can be an attempt of genocide. Even the attempt is against the law. Okay, so let's, let's go back and read that top part again. Just a moment. Right here, where it says, while the IIMM found reasonable grounds to conclude that there was a strong inference of genocidal intent on the part of the state based on the hostile policies towards the Rohingya, did I say it right?
Rohingya.
Rohingya, denial of their citizenship and ethnic identity hate speech. So anything the United States of America does to supervising the impossibility of performance for us to maintain our own human rights as nationals of our own state. Any attempt is even against the law, right? Continue. Condoned living conditions and impunity to date. The court will ultimately draw its own legal conclusions of the intent requirement of the merits. So the ICJ can just look at the intent and make a determination where they think there are some there, there, right, of the attempt. So it doesn't have to be always factual beyond a reasonable doubt, evidence. That could be an attempt. And the ICJ said, yeah, that's enough there, there for us to move forward with this genocide case. Because they recognize the belligerent state is withholding evidence. Okay, number two.
Number two, NGO fact-finding. In addition to the UN fact-finding, many NGOs collect data from victims and other sources that may prove invaluable for states alleging breaches of ergo honest parties obligations. However, the court has afforded less evidentiary weight on two NGO reports than UN reports. In armed activities, the court declined to credit a factual finding from a report by International Crisis Group declaring that it does not constitute reliable evidence. Still, each NGO report or document will be assessed by the court individually. In the Croatian genocide case, for instance, the court duly considered a report from Human Rights Watch, albeit not regarding it, a conclusive, as conclusive proof of the facts alleged.
All right.
Most recently, innovations in data security and metadata have improved the reliability of digital information collected by NGOs. However, these new tools introduce a range of evidentiary issues, including issues concerning the reliability of third-party custodians and their methods, electronic evidence, and confidential testimony.
All right, so Section C, witness evidence. Check this out, all right.
C, witness evidence. Where there is access to witnesses, witness testimony may be of particular value to an applicant seeking to overcome the asymmetrical access to documentary evidence which is likely to feature in the context of proceedings based on ergo honest parties standing. In Qatar versus United Arab Emirates, Qatar, Qatar submitted over one hundred witness statements from Qatari nationals affected by the United Arab Emirates measures. An applicant basing itself on ergo honest parties standing may face greater challenges in securing witness testimony because the legal controversy will not directly concern the applicant's nationals and nationals of the respondent may fear that giving witness evidence may expose them to reprisals. The court may order protective measures to facilitate the provision of witness testimony such as the use of pseudo- pseudisms and pseudonyms and redactions to public documents to obscure potentially identifying information.
All right, so what's happening here, Moors? So if, if we have witnesses, who can be a witness? Well, let's say we have Moors that are currently being incarcerated. That's a witness. Right? If we, if our Moors pledge their allegiance back to Moroccan state, that's a witness that says, even though that Moore, that's now a Moroccan national, no longer a subject of Morocco, no longer a naturalized subject of Morocco. That Moore now has pledged their allegiance back to Moroccan state and the Moroccan state recognizes that Moore as being a national of the state. Now that Moore comes under what? Moroccan law protections of the state. If a foreign state or a foreign international organization is still going to arrest, detain, sentence, and hold the body of our national, then that's a violation of international law. And our Moors' national can be an absolute witness to this particular type of genocide. That's a witness. Now, obviously, there's other types of witnesses, but of- more often than not, Moore's biggest evidence is going to be the fact that the United States keeps enforcing their inferior courts against us. See, that documentation, they keep submitting against us once we notify them that we're the competent authority of our own Moroccan states as nationals or as diplomats. Diplomats have privileges and amenities. If the United States continues to be a belligerent and violates international law regarding Moroccan nationals, it shall be a crime against humanity. It is genocide. It's a human rights violation. Especially every time they do something, they do it under what's called use of force. They show up with their sheriffs, with their warrants. They have their judge. The judge is a use of force, blunt, blunt-force object. The judge literally stand up there with a gavel, right? Blunt-force object. That's use of force. Their coercion is use of force. We'll have plenty of witnesses to say what they've done to us. We'll have the documentation that they gave us. The United States is giving us the documentation through their courts. That will be the biggest evidence that we have. That must be understood. Which goes back to Section A. What is Section A about? What was the best documentation you give the ICJ? Documentary evidence, right? Because documentation beats conversation every day of the week. So the witnesses, the biggest witness is gonna be us dealing with the fact that we were trying to fight their court system. Their police, their sheriffs, their legislation. Their use of force, their coercion. Their genocide. Their terrorism. Their torture. This must be understood. They will give us the documentation, one way or another.
Although neither its statute nor its rules lay down any specific requirements concerning the admissibility of statements which are presented by the parties in the course of contentious proceedings and the court leaves the parties free to determine the form in which they present evidence. It was weigh all evidence, including witness testimony, according to its credibility. The court treats written witness statements with caution, taking into account their form and their circumstances in which they were made. In looking at the circumstances in which the statements are made, the court considers factors such as whether they were made by state officials or by private persons not interested in the outcome of the proceedings and whether a particular affidavit attests to the existence of facts or represents only an opinion as regards cer- certain events. In the Croatian genocide case, the court gave no weight to unsigned witness statements and noted difficulties with certain statements that failed to mention the circumstances in which they were given or were only made several years after the events to which they refer. The court has given special value to witness evidence which is contemporaneous with the period concerned. It has also discounted hearsay evidence. D, proceedings of other added, uh, adequate bodies, adjudicating bodies. Evidence presented to and the findings of national courts and other international courts can serve as a resource to applicants in ICJ proceedings seeking to overcome the evidentiary challenges associated with ergo honest parties standing.
All right, so let's pause right here. This is very important for Moors to understand. It's Section D, right? But in my opinion, this is one of the most important parts right here because they're talking about proceedings of other courts. So the Moors have counsel court. According to our treaties, any dispute must be adjudicated through counsel court before we even ever go to the ICJ. Those are the instructions. Any dispute must be dealt with in the counsel court. So the counsel court is already gonna have all kinds of documentation and evidence exhibits. The ICJ will want to see the counsel court orders. Right? How, how can we prove that? Okay, even though it stated here, let's, let's take a look at something real quick. Here's France versus United States of America, right? August twenty-seventh, nineteen fifty-two, case concerning rights of nationals of the United States of America in Morocco. So the United States of America is in Morocco, right? So in this case, they talked about the counsel court. That France used the counsel court against the United States of America. Now the court got thrown out, right? So let's read about that real quick. Okay, so Moors on page one ninety-two of the judgment, okay? Page one ninety-two, now you see right here in the, in the title says Judgment of twenty-seven, right? Uh, eight fifty-two, United States nationals in Morocco. U dot S dot nationals in Morocco. That must be understood. Listen. So you come down and the ICJ would talk about the fact that France had used, since France was overseeing counsel court, right? Because of Treaty of Fairs in nineteen twelve. So this, so this case right here took place from nineteen fifty to nineteen fifty-two, and France actually used counsel court against the United States of America. Once that application was done, then it went directly to the ICJ. Right? To enforce it under Pacific Settlement of Dispute. But here's what the ICJ said about the counsel But here's what the ICJ said about the counsel court that France claimed it was in existence, right?
Reliance has also been placed upon the position of France and French nationals as regards the new tribunals of the protectorate, which have been established for the purpose of exercising jurisdictional jurisdiction over foreigners and applying Moroccan laws to them in the French zone. These tribunals have been constituted with French aid and under French direction and supervision. It is suggested that these are, in reality, conster courts and that the United States is entitled to be placed, in this regard, in a position of equality with France. But the tribunals of the protectorate in the French zone are not in any sense conster court. They are Moroccan courts organized in French models and standards affording guarantees of judicial equality to foreigners. Accordingly, the court cannot accept this contention.
See what happened? So in this case of France versus United States of America, nineteen fifty-two, the judgment. France had brought that counsel court orders, the documentation, right? It's evidence that came from a regional or national court or international court such as counsel court. They introduced that evidence to the ICJ. The ICJ said, nah, those are not Moors sitting in there, in there as judges. Those are Frenchmen pretending to be Moors. So what's my point here? That even in France versus United States of America, that France actually used counsel court against the United States of America because they were following the, the instructions of the treaties. And Moors have to do the same thing. We first have to adjudicate the United States of America if in fact they're found guilty. Then we go to the ICJ. That's the rules of engagement. That's the SOP, the Standard Operating Procedure. Right? But I just want to show it, Moors, this as an example. This did take place. That France is overseeing our courts. Going back to the case, so let's start with Section D again.
Section D, proceedings of other adjudicatory bodies. Evidence presented to and the findings of national courts and other international courts can serve as a resource to applicants in ICJ proceedings seeking to overcome the evidentiary challenges associated with erga-amas party's standing. The evolution of erga-amas party's standing before the ICJ coincides with the rise of the exercise of universal jurisdiction by national courts as a means of addressing impunity for violation of core values of the international community. For example, the Burmese Rohingya Organization, UK initiated a case in Argentina against Myanmar's top military and civil leaders alleging the commission of atrocity crimes against the Rohingya in Myanmar. More recently, prosecutors in Koblenz, Germany brought criminal charges of torture against two former senior officials of the Assad regime currently living in Germany. Seventeen alleged victims of the defendants formerly detained at the Al Khatib prison of Damascus gave testimony in that trial in fall of twenty twenty. The court's jurisprudent jurisprudence demonstrates a willingness to consider evidence presented before national courts and the findings of other international courts.
Pause. So the ICJ is going to take a look at your so-called competent counsel court orders, advisory opinions, and judgments. Which means all the Moors have to be on the same page. All the Moore states, even though we have our own autonomous states. Each one of the Moore states' counsel court can't be saying something totally con- that contradicts another counsel court of a different Moore state. All the Moore states and their counsel courts have to have similar language in their counsel court orders. Because, because the ICJ is going to be looking at these orders. They're looking for uniformity. They're looking for standards. They're looking for law and, and law is standardized. So we have to be on the same page. All the counsel courts have to be on the same page of each of the states. So when the ICJ petitions to take a look at your counsel court orders, they have every right to do that. That's the, one of the first places they're going to start because they want to look at a case that already took place. Because that becomes what? Documentary evidence. So the court's jurisprudence demonstrates a willingness to consider evidence presented before national courts and the findings of other international courts. This is very important to understand, Moors. They're expect us to help ourselves first. They're looking at your competency. That's why Moors have to study, study, study. Let's continue.
For example, in the Croatian genocide case, the court considered the statements of witnesses given in the national courts of Bosnia and Serbia without however being regarded as conclusive proof of the facts alleged. The court also appeared to give substantial weight to evidence presented to and the findings of the International Criminal Tribunal for the former Yugoslavia. Proceedings before national courts have also emerged as a means to secure evidence to support erga-amas parties' claims before the ICJ. In June of twenty twenty, the Gambia initiated proceedings in the United States invoking United States Statute twenty-eight UC seventeen eighty-two, which provides an avenue for pertaining, for obtaining evidence to aid ongoing judicial proceedings. In particular, the Gambia sought to compel Facebook to provide data on suspended or terminated accounts of Myanmar officials likely in an effort to demonstrate genocidal intent. The matter remains pending before the District of Columbia District Court.
Alright, so as you see here, Moors, the ICJ is perfectly aware of the United States Statute twenty-eight USC subsection seventeen eighty-two, where you petition for documents, right? It's for the opportunity for freedom of documentation, right? So the ICJ knows that. The ICJ can use that same statute, say, yeah, go ahead and get those documents up. That's a Freedom Report, right? But look what how the, look at how this attorney wrote, United States, United States. He didn't say United States of America. And the ICJ refers to the United States as the United States and not the United States of America. We're talking about two different legal personalities. United States is not a semantics to the United States of America. These are two separate legal personalities. But what they're pointing out here is that even this case right here is getting stalled out in the District of Columbia Court. The ICJ knows the games are being played. They can come in and help more. We're gonna learn more about that in just a moment.
E judicial intervention.
Read that three times, please.
E judicial intervention. E judicial intervention. The ICJ statute affords the court extensive powers for obtaining evidence that could be a particular value in a case based on erga-amas parties standing in which the applicant has limited access to evidence of events that occurred within the respondent's territory. For instance, Article forty-nine permits the court to call upon the agents to produce any document or to supply any explanations. Article fifty authorizes the court to entrust any individual body, bureau, commission, or other organizations that it may select with the task of carrying out an inquiry, S I C, or giving an expert. Section two permits the court to request of public international organizations information relevant to cases before it. And Article forty-two, I'm sorry, Article forty-four, Section two provides for the possibility of full court site visits to procure evidence on the spot. In Oil Platforms Judge Awada op- opened that in cases featuring an asymmetry in access to evidence, the court should engage in a more in-depth examination of this difficult problem of ascertaining the facts of the case in necessary pro- propriomotu through various powers and procedural means available to the court under its statute and the rules of court, including those relating to the questions of the Bureau of P- Burden of Proof and the standard of proof in the concrete text of the present case.
Alright, so pause right there. So let's go back. Very important for Moors to understand. Section E, judicial intervention. So wait. So the Moore states can come together as erga-amas parties. And each Moore state can write a declaration of intervention. But even the ICJ has the power of intervention. Judicial intervention. They can come in and help the Moors. Not just come in and ask for documents, they can come in and actually be standing in Morocco and come to the actual site. Listen. The ICJ statute affords the court extensive powers for obtaining evidence that could be of particular value in a case based on erga-amas parties standing in which the applicant has limited access to evidence of events that occurred within a respondent's territory. For instance, Article forty-nine permits the court to call upon the agents to produce any document or to supply any explanations. Article fifty authorizes the court to entrust any individual body, bureau, commission, or other organizations that it may select with the task of carrying out an inquiry or giving an expert opinion. Article thirty-four, Section two permits the court to request of public international organizations information relevant to cases before it. And Article forty-four, Section two provides for the possibility of full court site visits to procure evidence on the spot. I'll say it again. Article forty-four, Section two of the ICJ statutes provides for the possibility of full court site visits to procure evidence on the spot. That's the ICJ. In Oil Platforms Judge Awada open, opined that in cases featuring asymmetry in access to evidence, the court should engage in a more in-depth examination of this difficult problem of ascertaining the facts of the case if necessary, propriomoto through various powers and procedural means available to the court under its statute and the rules of court, including those relating to the questions of the burden of proof and the standard of proof in the concrete context of the present case. So the ICJ can help the claimant state to get the evidence, circumstantial evidence that they need. And they can come directly to the site and get it. Okay, let's read this last paragraph.
However, the ICJ has rarely invoked the statutory powers. It has sought an expert opinion propriomoto only once. In the Corfu Channel case, the only site visit under Article sixty-six took place in Gapsh- that Gapshikabab Nagamoros project, the Hungary versus Slav- Slavica. Slavica, when Slavica invited the court to visit the lo- lo- locality to which the case relates to there, relates and there to exercise its functions with regards to the obtaining of evidence. One commentator opens that the ICJ has taken a generally reactive role, which with respect to evidence gathering despite possessing broad evidentiary powers under the state statute of the court. However, if ICJ practice involves, evolves to feature increased case, cases based on standing erga-amas parties, increased pressure on the court to be more proactive in exercising its evidentiary powers may also be on the horizon. For the conclusion, the evolution of erga-amas party's standing before the ICJ brings welcome opportunities for the greater enforcement of community values and could serve as a valuable tool in achieving accountability and redressing human rights violations. However, standings is only the first step. The pursuit of merits judgments in specific cases will require careful consideration of case strategy, the legal standards that will apply during merits proceedings, and the marshaling of evidence to meet the applicant's burden of proof.
Alright, so everything about the burden of proof. But the reality is, the United Nations will assist us to get the proof. Reality is, even the ICJ has the power to come to the site and get the proof. It's very important for Moors to understand. But what is it that the ICJ is really looking for? They want you to bring them the proof through all the documentation that you put together yourself. Do your best to accumulate, aggregate all the evidence and bring it to them. They'll look at the attempt because that's a part of their, their scope. They can even look at an attempt based upon the information you're bringing them. If it's enough, they can go with it. You know how the United States would say that, take something to the judge and say, look, we need a search warrant. We need an arrest warrant. Those cops are only bringing just enough information to the judge to say, there seems like there's a little bit of there there for me to issue a search warrant or arrest warrant for you to go now and do what? Get access a person's car, home, whatever, and then go inside and get the rest of the evidence. Didn't they just recently do that to, uh, Donald J. Trump, right? This is what happens. Okay? That's the power of judges, right? Okay, so that's the end of the read, which is some basic fundamental information about erga-amas, right? Moors have to go back and do more research on erga-amas parties, but it's a very, very powerful, powerful means. Ways and means for Moors to come together as parties to fight as one state, right? So let me give the Moors an example. This right here is a counsel court order that was written by AMPAC's competent counsel court. I wrote it, right? Now, I wrote this on March fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, okay? So it's a Lordy of Morse Parade of Anti-Colorado, Constable Court of the State. Case concerning treaty rights of Moors nationals, right? A Lordy of Morse Parade of Anti-Colorado against the United States of America, United States and the state of Colorado. Right? The ICJ is gonna read this one day, one day soon. They're gonna look for the competency of what words was the counsel court using based in international law principles and customs, right? So we take the time to go to Control F. We put in the words erga erga-amas, right? The word erga-amas in this particular counsel court order has about thirty-three pages. It's mentioned nine times. Okay? The first time it's mentioned, this is where it says, Section four. Reaffirming, reaffirming that AMPAC does not require the prior consent from any colonial contracting state or charter colony state. However, a formality recognition will prove that the United States of America and the United States is willing to comply with its adopted, ratified, deposited, and resolved provisions of Moors treaties and adhere to the periphery norms of international law just coaches erga-amas principles and decolonization in Morocco. And to this end, this is the first time I've mentioned erga-amas principles to the United States in this particular counsel court order. So when the ICJ looks at this, they say, okay, well, it sounds like counsel court already told the United States in good faith that we're utilizing erga-amas principles based upon the periphery norms of international law just coaches, which is human rights. This is what the ICJ will see. Right? Let's go down to the next section. It talks about erga-amas. We're just gonna jump around a little bit. Line number four seventy. Wherefore the norms of international law obligations Wherefore the norms of international law obligations conferred upon AMPAC and to the United States of America and its international organizations are bound to the periphery norms of just coaches and erga omis principles, which are both substantive regarding the nationality of indigenous Moors and the obligation to enforce its constitution and judicial authority on any foreigners and Moroccan subjects by constable court orders per erga omis parties or erga omis principles. Take a look at it again. Here's another subsection. Line number four seventy-seven. For this reason, AMPAC Constable Court finds that Moors nationals have a right to political self-determination, self-government, and airship as contracting parties to the Treaty of Peace and Friendship eighteen thirty-six, Articles twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two, and can immediately demand for their trust and effects to be deposited to the hands of the State of AMPAC's officials via erga omis principles and the customary norms of international law. This is how the consto court's talking, utilizing what? The words erga omis. Because these are obligations that the United States must abide to. Let's look at one more. This is line number nine forty-two. The right of erga omis principles and the rule of law by the ICJ East Timor, Portugal versus Australia, third of June nineteen ninety-five, paragraph twenty-nine, and the ICJ legal consequences of the construction of the wall of occupied Palestinian territory advisory opinion nine July two thousand and four, paragraphs eighty-eight and one fifty-six. So I'm using erga omis. I'm showing the ICJ, I'm looking up case law that they already ruled on. That when they see that the constable court of the Moroccan state is utilizing substantive law, well-served principles, case law, the repertoire that's already been set forth in international law. This is what they're looking for, for, from Moors. Right? Okay. What else are they looking for? They're trying to see if the Moors have come together under unity. This right here I have on the board is called the draft articles to establish a convention in the Empire of Morocco, the Wazir Regional Council, done on third of January twenty twenty-three. So this is a draft, right? Has been ratified. It's just a draft. Okay? But what's happening right now? The Moors are coming together at a round table to unite. But, but according to the International Charter under chapter six, Article thirty-three, the Moors have a right to do what? We have, we have a right to resort to regional agencies or arrangements. That's what we have a right to do. In order to do what? Maintain the peace and security amongst who? Moors and Americans. But first, we have to rein in the order of each other. Right? We gotta all get on the same page and unite. And the only way to do that, we have to start coming together to enforce standards, principles, accountability on each other. That way, by the time we go to the International Court of Justice, they'll read documentation, documentation such as this. The Moors will show the world that we put together a council that we're showing the world that we're trying to govern the entire continent as Moors, collectively as Moors to now manage each other. First, we gotta learn how to manage Moors before we can manage Americans, and that's what the council's all about, to assist other Moors. That way, we can be an appropriate persona su juri is together with standards. We have to standardize law. So the ICJ will be looking at, say, oh, all these Moors got together because this right here is approximately thirty-three pages. Moors will learn more about this in the future, how we come together. What else? Here's a draft articles for the United States of Morocco Treaty Organization. What's that all about? See, the Moors gotta get together and unite. We gotta sign a treaty amongst each other. We're gonna show the world that we're at varying stages of advancement. That we're just not some proxy state that we're actually trying to govern, self-govern based upon our own self-determination. But we gotta show the world, we're serious. When we sign a treaty amongst all the Moore states, that's a very, very, very powerful mechanism. That's a very powerful proper written instrument to have treaties amongst the Moroccan states. The ICJ will take a look at this. Why is this important? Because when we come together with a treaty, we give the United States a copy of it and say, add that to your record. It will be enforced. If you do anything to supervene the impossibility of performance for our Moroccan laws to be enforced, well, you've already been given advance notice if the Moroccan states gonna come together. Because an injury or an attack on one Moroccan state is an attack on all the Moroccan states. Well, that sounds good. Where's the contract that says that? Well, here it is. And guess who's gonna get advance notice? The United States. So if they try to act like a belligerent towards one of our Moroccan states, they already know in advance that the other Moroccan states have every right to intervene. That's powerful. And we're showing the world that the Moors are coming together. Let me give the Moors an example as I start to wrap up. When you're going back to the Charter of the United Nations, Article thirty-three talks about agencies, right? So as example, example, regional or national agencies. Right now, there's an agency called the Organization of American States. Moors can look it up. The acronym is O A S. That's an organization of all the American states coming together. That's Central America, South America, connotative linguistics, but that, that's an organization. That's what you call a regional agency or a national agency. Who else? The African Union. The Africans have a union called the A U. That's a regional agency. Europe, Europe, European Union is called the E U. That's a regional agency. Who else? Asian, Asia has a, has Asian Cooperation Dialogue. It's called the A C D. My question to the Moors is, where's our organization? How do we come together as states to mirror image what other powerful states are already doing to show the world that we're at varying stages of advancement as well, that the Moroccan states are coming together to become one state? Listen. Number five. Moroccan organization. That's what we need. Acronym M O. Mo. What up, Mo? You see? This is next level thinking. This is critical thinking. This is what we need based upon political structuring. Because all these other states, or shall I say, continents are getting together to come together to unite. The Moors have to unite. Listen. As we start to wrap up. This is the Organization of American States. You can look that up. Here's Africa, African Union, right? They say they have super national union in Africa. That's their union, the A U. Here's Europe's union, right? They say they're a union of twenty-seven member states. Even though there's fifty states in Europe, twenty-seven of them, twenty-seven of them are members of the European Union. Here's Asia. Asia Cooperation Dialogue. They're an intergovernmental organization. Now they're still working on putting together a union. They're in dialogue right now, but they're getting closer to come together with their unity, right? They're working on unity. Okay. Where's the Moors organization? Well, we're working on it. It's work in progress. Let's go back to it. Convention in Empire Morocco, we're putting together a Wazir Regional Council. We're starting to unite. All the Moroccan states become, become parties. The Wazirs can sit at a round table and help us to govern together, collectively. What else? We're putting together a treaty. That's the treaty organization right there. That's your M O, your Moroccan organization. We're working on it. It's work in progress. We as Moors are at varying stages of advancement. We are self-governing. And we don't have to reinvent the wheel. All we have to do is be good stewards to go and learn what other states have already done. Africa started proclaiming their independence in the late nineteen fifties all the way through the sixties and the seventies. And the Moors in Morocco is still over here trying to figure out how to proclaim independence. And the Africans have done it since the late fifties. What did we do as Moors to study how the Africans proclaimed their independence? We haven't done a very good job of that, have we? We're going to move the ball forward now. We're going to unite. We gotta leave the old paradigm in the past and move forward together. We're more powerful together. We have to unite. And we have to put purpose and priority over personal vendettas. We have to put purpose and priority over procrastination. We have to put person, purpose and priority over being paralyzed. And right now, the Moors suffer from paralysis. We have motion, but we don't have forward motion. We're stuck at one spot. And they say the definition of sanity is doing the same thing over and over and over again, expecting a different result. We have paralysis of analysis. And we've had that for over one hundred years. It's time now to unite and have progress. Noam Dr. Ali said to be active and not passive. We have to move forward with understanding what other states have already done on planet Earth. It's time for us to take our seat at the table amongst the other affairs of states that must be understood. So as I close out, let's get back there to Charter of the United Nations, chapter six, about the Pacific settlement disputes. Question is, how can Moors settle disputes with any foreign state or any foreign international organization in Morocco? What the answer is unity. What type of unity? It's gotta be based in conformity to international laws. It's about erga omis parties coming together as states. It's about the Wazir Regional Council. Alright, all the parties, the Moroccan states become parties to the Wazir Regional Council, which is a regional agency, according to the Charter, Article uh, thirty-three, section one. Then we must establish what? The United States of Morocco Treaty. Okay? That will become our union. That way, we can give the United States notice that they touch one of our states, we got a right to fight back under defense. Okay? Then we must always have a declaration of intervention that becomes the class action lawsuit in writing because it's a documentation, is the evidence. And last but not least, we must be peace-loving states. Alright? I am with that. Is not.